Good evening, everybody. This is a light color order to be in the Belbrook City Council. Today is Monday, September the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty. If I can have you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, Pam, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Havens.
Here.
Dr. Van Valtheisen.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter.
Here.
And Mayor Schwalter.
Here. At this time, we have a motion to excuse Nick Edwards from tonight's meeting.
I'm moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, I missed who seconded that.
Ernie.
Ernie, thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Middlestetter to excuse Mr. Edwards from tonight's meeting. This was seconded by Mr. Havens. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Dr. Van Valtheisen? I think there was a yes there.
I'm mute.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you. In everyone's packets, we have the meetings of our, or the minutes of our last meeting, which was September the fourteenth. Did anyone have any changes or correction to those minutes?
Done, Mayor.
No.
Being done, I declare the minutes approved as submitted. Next up on the agenda is mayor announcements and special guests. Before we get to our special guests, I do have one announcement relative to Trick or Treat. As we draw closer to Halloween, the question has turned to Trick or Treat and what each community is planning, whether to hold it or cancel it. The governor has put the decision in local government hands. The Ohio Department of Health has also issued guidelines for safe Halloween celebrations, including Trick or Treat. With that being said, we do not plan to cancel Trick or Treat, but rather leave it up to the parents and residents to choose if they would like to participate this year. Trick or Treat is not a city sanctioned event, but rather a community event. The city has always stood with the other Dayton area communities in designating October thirty first from six to eight P M. as Trick or Treat. Participation, rain, shine, snow, or pandemic has always been and always will be up to the community members to choose whether or not to participate. We simply ask that everyone stay safe and take the proper precautions to stay safe this year amid the pandemic. At this time, we have kind of a full agenda tonight, but if anyone in council cares to comment on my statements, I please invite him to do so now.
I totally agree. We've been through this so far. Parents and community members are certainly capable of deciding whether or not they want to participate. They don't want to participate, turn the porch light off.
That's a great, great. Thank you, Elaine.
I echo the same sentiments. Use the porch light. I think it's kind of known that if it's off, don't go there. It's on, and you're welcome. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Forrest. Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. That's our path going forward at this time. If any changes, we'll certainly let you know. But again, we do not plan to cancel Trick or Treat. Next up on the agenda is the Beautification Awards for two thousand and twenty presented by Michelle and Rob Johnson. I see Rob Johnson's on. Welcome, Rob. You're on mute right now.
All right, there we go.
Very good.
Yes. I muted my headset. I'm on Zoom all day long, so.
Okay, good.
All right, so let's, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll start the presentation here. So this is the presentation for the two thousand and twenty Belbrook Beautification Award winners. My wife, Michelle, and I took this over last year. My wife is unable to join tonight. She's busy with the Green County Board of Elections. But we'll go ahead and get started here. The two thousand and twenty committee members, we had the following residents. Part of our committee this year, Becky Wick, Sophia Brierley, Linda Edwards, Bonnie Howe, and Betty Ogrin, and my wife and myself as co-chairs. My wife and I were members for several years before Bron Wilson retired. Well, I have this slide present, actually, am I? Do you see my presentation? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wasn't sharing that.
We're good. We see it now.
All right, yeah, not the presentation. All right, so now you see it, yes. So again, here are the committee members. While I have this slide presented here, you can see an example of the award that the recipients receive. There's two things that the recipients receive when they win the Beautification Award. The city puts out a sign for about a month. But then the city, the recipients also receive this laser engraved rock that is theirs to keep forever. We're fortunate that the high school STEM program has a laser engraver, and they perform the laser engraving of these rocks. And so kudos to Blake Barnes this year, much as last year as well, who provided these engraved rocks to us. So a couple of things regarding award guidelines, the city is divided into five sections, and I'll share a map of that in a moment. There's four, the committee members are each assigned a section, and they come back with four nominees for each section. And all those nominees are presented to all the committee members, with the top two vote receivers in each section receiving a beautification award. We have one business winner. Citizens may nominate homes as well, although this year we did not receive any nominations from citizens. And as far as eligibility goes, city council members, beautification committee members, and winners within the past five years are ineligible. And I'll go ahead and share the, share the map now. Are you able to see the map? Or am I not sharing that properly? I don't think I'm sharing that properly. So the city is divided into five sections. Go ahead and step through the award winners now. So our first winner in the section A was Ron and Joanne Coleman. Each of these award winners, we were able to take photos of their houses, so everyone can enjoy what we see here. Another section A winner, Michael and Brunhilde Statham. Section B, we have Robert and Vicky Nuss. And Douglas and Donna Merrill. Moving on to section C, we have Robert Gooden and Lisa Gooden, and it's a father and daughter. And then we have Steve and Wendy Lutz. Moving on to section D, we have Ann Beaman on Upper Hillside. And then Richard Scott. Section E, we have Michael and Marcia Rousch. As well as Louis and Patricia Orbin. And then our business winner this year was a collection of dentists. We have William Dolan, dentist, and Burton Hagler is the orthodontist, as well as Leanne Yelly, photographer. So this is down by Lakeman. And that's the end of the presentation there. Normally, years past, we would have the award winners attend the city council meeting, and we would present them their award-winning rocks. But given the fun with COVID this year, we, as we notified the recipients, we presented their rocks to them at that time. Any questions?
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Rodney, thank you and your wife for your time and effort. I know this is a big deal, and it's a very simple presentation, but I know the process of choosing the winners is very involved and takes a lot of your time. So we certainly want to congratulate the winners, and also thank you and your wife for voting your time and effort to head up this program.
Certainly, we've been in Belbrook twenty plus years and love it, and so anything we can do to support the community.
We greatly appreciate. This is a big deal for our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Next up on the agenda, we have a public hearing ordinance two thousand and twenty dash six. Mrs. Middlestetter. Elaine, you're on mute right now.
I forgot I was reading. I have to pull my.
Just real quick, guys, if this is a public hearing and the public's not able to see this, or is it still a public hearing?
They are able to join via Zoom, Ernie, so the link was published on our website and on the agenda. And so it's, it's still, it's still live on the internet. It's just not streaming to YouTube.
And it is on cable, even though YouTube isn't working, so.
So participation is still possible through the Zoom link, which was in the agenda. So it is still possible for people to participate if they choose to. So yes, it's still technically a public hearing.
Okay.
Zoom is really the only platform that somebody can participate in the meeting versus YouTube, which is just a viewing capability.
I thought the Zoom said only if you wanted to speak should you join the Zoom.
Well, if someone wants to speak, then we do have attendees listening in right now, so they have the ability to raise their hand and be allowed to speak, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Elaine, you're on mute.
Which resolution am I reading? Two thousand and twenty dash Y?
No, it's ordinance two thousand and twenty dash six.
Page nineteen in the packet.
Okay. Sorry about that, folks.
No problem.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash six. And ordinance, oh geez, come on. An ordinance adopting the updated comprehensive plan for the city of Belbrook. Whereas the city of Belbrook has utilized a comprehensive plan as a tool to assist in making decisions related to the vision and planning of the community since the first iteration in nineteen seventy-four. And coordinating, and whereas the city entered into an agreement in two thousand and seventeen with the Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission of Green County to update the city of Belbrook's comprehensive plan, which was completed in two thousand and nineteen. And whereas in two thousand and nineteen, both the city of Belbrook and Planning Board and City Council each reviewed the plan and recommended its approval. And whereas this two thousand and nineteen city of Belbrook comprehensive plan remains in substantially the same form since the initial review, with the exception of one revision to the pedestrian bike and multi-use path map located on page twenty-two and attached here too. And whereas there have been previously adopted legislation related to the adoption and revision of the comprehensive plan, and whereas the current version of the comprehensive plan for the city of Belbrook on file with the clerk of council shall take control over any previously adopted comprehensive plan where inconsistencies may exist. And whereas city council hereby desires to adopt the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan for the city of Belbrook as the official document to assist in the decision-making process for planning, visioning, and other legislative matters related to the city of Belbrook. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan for the city of Belbrook on file with the city clerk of council is hereby adopted. Section two, city council further finds and orders that this comprehensive plan shall supersede and take precedence over and control any future development. Section three, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that any and all deliberations of this council that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. All, all here is Lisa, or Melissa.
Okay, so as referenced in the ordinance, the comprehensive plan is being adopted via ordinance. It was originally adopted by resolution, and I know that this might seem a little bit confusing, but over the years, the comprehensive plan, since its inception, or the first iteration in nineteen seventy-four, has been adopted and modified by both ordinance and resolution. So the last time that it was changed, it was changed by resolution. So when it was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, it was adopted by resolution. So what we're doing is we're solving two problems with this ordinance. And the first problem that we're solving is that we are formalizing the comprehensive plan by ordinance. And we are specifically and intentionally making this an ordinance, and any change to the comprehensive plan moving forward will also be via ordinance. So we are, we are adopting the ordinance tonight, and then we are also changing one thing, which was a map on page twenty-two. And when the public, or I'm sorry, when the introduction of the ordinance occurred, there was just the one-page map, which was in the packet. And then we were kind of flipping back and forth during the introduction of the ordinance to try to compare. And so there is a side-by-side in tonight's packet, which shows the old map and the new map. So there was a change to one line, which shows that in the first iteration, there was a proposed multi-use path that extended from dots up to Terrace Creek, I believe, all along Sugar Maple Place. So that is actually an existing sidewalk and was never meant to be a proposed multi-use path. So the majority of that is an existing sidewalk. And then there will be a connection, which will be a walking path, but it will not be either a sidewalk or a multi-use path, which is categorized in this pedestrian bike and multi-use path map. So there was that correction, which removes that purple line, and then just shows the existing sidewalk, which is actually in place up in that neighborhood. And then that's it. So that's the only change. So we are, we are making the comprehensive plan formalized by ordinance, and then we are correcting the one map. So that is the, that is, that is what we are doing with this ordinance tonight. So I will take any questions related to that.
Any questions of council?
No questions from me.
Anyone else?
So I'm assuming then, from what I'm looking at on that map, that the walking path down the hill up by dots is no longer on the map. It's not going to be there, that walking path.
So this map, Elaine, is just showing multi-use paths and sidewalks. And so that is going to be a walking path, which is neither categorized as a sidewalk or a multi-use path. So that's just going to be a walking path. So it's based on the categories in this map. It doesn't really fall into either of those, but it is a part of the record plan. So it will be installed, but it's not categorized as a multi-use path or a sidewalk. So it's, it's kind of a, an anomaly in terms of its construction.
Okay, so that, it's still going to go in, but not as part of the comprehensive plan?
Correct, because it's not categorized as a sidewalk, and it's not categorized as a multi-use path. So it is part of the record plan, which was adopted by ordinance. So it's, it will still go in, but it's not categorized in a way that this map would recognize.
Okay, I think I got that.
Anyone else? That being the case, given this is a public hearing, does anyone from the viewing audience have anything to present? Pam, is anyone raising their hands, or?
I am looking, just to make sure. Give everyone half a second to do that. And I have not, no one has asked to speak, so.
Given that's the case, I now declare this public hearing to be closed. And at this time, I'd like a motion regarding ordinance two thousand and twenty dash six.
I move that we adopt motion ordinance two thousand and twenty dash six.
Thank you, Elaine. Can I have a second, please?
I'll say that.
Thank you, Forrest.
A motion was made by Mrs. Middlestetter to adopt ordinance two thousand and twenty dash six and ordinance adopting the updated comprehensive plan for the city of Belbrook. This was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Valtheisen?
Yes.
And Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you, Pam. We have no introductions of ordinances tonight, but we do have two resolutions. At this time, is Rick Clemmons signed on or in the waiting room? I know he wanted to be part of this.
We also have Jessica Hanson, planning and zoning assistant as well, so she will be added in as a panelist as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Welcome, Jessica, who will give you for Rick.
Pam, could you maybe mute everybody, and then maybe let people come back in? Maybe that might fix the feedback issue or the audio issue?
I'm showing two Rick Clemmons boxes, too. That might be a problem.
I believe that his engineer typically uses one that's labeled as him as well, so it's probably Mr. Clemmons and then his engineer. That's the way it was in the planning board meeting at least. So I'm making an assumption here, though.
There's Rick.
Rick, was John trying to get in just a little bit ago?
I saw him for a minute, and then he disappeared.
In the distorted audio, I heard it's him say this is John Brumall, I think.
Maybe he's trying to log back in.
We could probably go ahead, Mayor, with at least getting the resolution read in, especially since we have Jessica and Rick both here, and then we can go from there.
Okay, welcome, Rick, and welcome, Jessica. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash X, Councilman Havens.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number two thousand and twenty dash X, a resolution approving the replat of lots twenty-seven A and twenty-six B of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section four. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code sets forth the city of Belbrook Planning Board as the designated municipal plating authority. And whereas the requested plat meets the requirements of the city of Belbrook zoning code and subdivision regulations. And whereas the Belbrook Planning Board has recommended approval of the replat of lots twenty-seven A and twenty-six B of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section four. And whereas the city of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that the changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by action of the city, Belbrook City Council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves section one that the replat of lots twenty-seven A and twenty-six B of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section four, is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section two, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
So that's actually the Haley-Dusa Group replat, twenty-six A and not specifically the Clemmons Development.
So Jessica, is the resolution referencing the wrong lot number?
There should be, there should be two different replats. So there should be a replat for lot twenty-seven A and lot twenty-six B, and there should be a replat for lots forty, forty E, forty F, and forty G.
Yes, Jessica, the one that was just read in is for twenty-seven A and twenty-six B.
Okay.
So there's a separate resolution for the, the number of other lots that you just read.
That's specifically not, that's specifically not the Clemmons Development one, that's Haley-Dusa Group. Do we have them here, Pam, by any chance? Okay.
Well, the first resolution is Clemmons, correct?
No, the one he just read was Haley-Dusa.
Okay, got it.
Okay. But Planning Board, see no issues, see no issues with this? It's basically just to, in the staff report, you'll see there's an existing drive that crosses in the other lot. It's just a replat around that drive. in the staff report, you'll see, uh, there's an existing drive that crosses in the other lot. It's just a replat around that drive. To ensure that, you know, whoever buys that lot doesn't have a driveway that shouldn't belong there, so.
My only concern here is why wasn't this done before the driveway was put in?
That's a good question. Um, we really don't have in our, uh, planning any sort of like permit for a driveway. The only thing we really regulate is a curb cut onto the drive. Um, and that specifically, we have Ryan go out and, you know, make sure that they're doing a despecification. But, uh, they do own both lots, so, um, it is within their privy, if they wanted to, to, you know, make it cross the boundary line there. So I believe they might want to sell the lot. So if so, then that would, they would mean they would have to, of course, replat, so.
But we don't know whether it was intentional or not. It may have just been in boots to put the driveway across the lot line, lot line like that.
Um, it could have been, but it looks, it looks intentional. Um, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty far over the lot line, to be honest, so.
But the fact they own the other lot, I guess, makes it a little bit
Yeah.
you understand. So you're saying that they are planning to now sell that lot?
Uh, I don't know that for sure. That's my assumption. That would be my assumption. The reason why they want to replat it would be for the, for resale. That way they have their driveway secured. They don't have to have an easement for access of the driveway. Because if they did sell it, that's the only way they can have access to the driveway would be to have some sort of easement agreement with the current, the new owner.
The planning board was okay with it?
Yes.
And and just for the record, just because it wasn't referenced in the resolution, do we have the date, just so it can be recorded in the minutes as to when planning board approved this? I know that they did both of these resolution replats, um, at their last.
Yeah, give me just a second, sorry.
It was on September the 17th.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was in the official record.
Any other questions on council with regards to resolution 2020 dash X?
So, uh, exactly how far over is the new line for the replat?
Um, I don't, let me look at it here, um.
It looks like the previous map had 115 feet originally on the curb.
It looks like it's about, uh, 20 or 30 feet. I can't honestly, um, discern. But they still have enough, um, frontage on the right away and everything, so it's not.
Oh, okay, I see the new line. Okay, I'm sorry. Looks like it goes now down to 88.44 feet. Will that cause any issues for that new lot? Any restrictions?
It shouldn't. Um, there are other lots that have similar frontage in Highview Terrace with the same, that same frontage, so.
Okay.
Uh, Jessica, doesn't the, uh, police chief have some involvement on a curb cut?
Um, perhaps to make sure that, uh, with a curb cut, to make sure that it is, um, sight distances are ensured, but.
Forrest, we actually changed that oversight to the service director, just because he had a little bit more insight in terms of, uh, roadway infrastructure and things like that. So, um, it used to just solely be approved by the police chief. And, um, with some conversation, we decided that, uh, we were going to put that approval in the hands of the service director. So it, it did switch. So it did used to be the, uh, police chief. But, I mean, of course, they work together, but it just made a little bit more sense for the curb cuts to go to the service director versus the police chief.
Okay, as long as it's covered.
So did they get that approval before they put the driveway in?
Uh, I'm, I can't remember. I'm not sure when the driveway is installed, to be honest.
So, so the separate curb cuts, Ernie, would come if somebody wanted to add a driveway to their lot or, like, this is part of a planned development. So since it's part of a planned development, they don't need separate approval for a curb cut.
Okay.
Any more questions of council? Eric Nink, we have a motion regarding resolution 2020 dash X.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
All right, a motion was made by Mr. Havens to adopt resolution 2020 dash X, a resolution approving the replat of lots 27A and 26B of the Highview Sub, Highview Terrace subdivision, section four. This was seconded by Dr. Van Valtheisen. Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Valtheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you, Pam. Next up is resolution 2020 dash Y. Dr. Van Valtheisen, please.
All righty, Mayor, thank you. Resolution number 2020 dash Y, a resolution approving the replat of lots 1E, 3D, 4B, and unplatted lands into lots 1F, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G of Highview Terrace subdivision. Sorry, we had a pop-up covering the next word, sections one and two. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code sets forth, the City of Belbrook Planning Board is the designated municipal plating authority. And whereas the requested plat meets the requirements of the City of Belbrook zoning code and subdivision regulations. And whereas the City of Belbrook Planning Board has approved the replat of lots 1E, 3D, 4B, and unplatted lands into lots 1F, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G of the subdivision, sections one and two. I apologize, Mayor, it's, um, just one of those nights, um, with the computer wanting to just fight away. Uh, let me go back um, into lots 1F, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G of the Highview Terrace subdivision, sections one and two. And whereas the City of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate the changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by action of the Belbrook City Council. Now, therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves section one, that the replat of lots 1E, 3D, 4B, and unplatted lands into lots 1F, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G of the Highview Terrace subdivision, section one and two, is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section two, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan. And section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. That's it, sir.
Thank you, Dave. I know tonight we do have the developer here and also the engineer, and if one of them would like to speak, now would be a good time, otherwise we'll just go to questions.
Yeah, I mean, obviously this Rick Clemmons, obviously the purpose of this replat is to clean all that up at the entrance of the development. Originally there is, well, I should say, currently there's a sub-street that goes into that property that we were, we were going to tie that into the property next to it for development, which we are not going to develop now. So that's the main reason for this replat. There'll be a little ball that's put in down at the bottom, uh, where the sub-street is now, which cleans up the, uh, which cleans up the streets.
Okay. Rick, am I looking at it correctly? Does it look like a couple of lots are going to be landlocked totally, or?
No, tho- those, those lots are to be annexed. Those two are, are going to become one. And that back piece will have to be annexed, because the back piece is currently in Sugar Creek Township. So in talking to Barry Tiffany, are you there?
Yep.
So in talking with Barry Tiffany, he agreed that the process, because I'm, I'm not sure the exact process for the annexation of those pieces, he made it sound like it was more of a administrative because both, both jurisdictions were in approving it so that we could go ahead and record this and then come back in with all the paperwork that has to go back and forth between the city and the Belbrook, or between the Belbrook and township to, uh, to, to get it all in one piece of land. There, there's a lot right next to, and I don't know what lot number it is, but the, the wedge, the wedge-shaped lot, there's a lot next to it, I think, might be 2B, I'm not for sure, where there's a house built on it. And the house is in Belbrook, but then the piece of land behind it is in Sugar Creek Township. And Sugar Creek said, you know, we don't, we want to clean all this up. So, and I think Belbrook's all along with them saying, yeah, we, we, we want to make that into Belbrook. And, but Barry Tiffany, because the interest of time, said, let's go ahead and, and record it, and then we'll come back in and annex it.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Does anyone on council have questions? Melissa, do you have something? I'm sorry.
I can give an update on that. I did speak with Barry Tiffany and, um, that annexation process should be taken care of in the next 90 days. So that is in the works. And so, um, just like Mr. Clemmons said, that'll all be, uh, coming before council. And then this is just something that happened first and then the annexation process. It's a little more time consuming and, uh, we're all in agreeance with it and it'll be coming to council, hopefully by the first of the year.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Just getting comments from the standpoint of staff on this?
Uh, no, uh, so there is a, um, comment on the plat um, that stipulates that if he had, if, even if it didn't, if we didn't annex, there is a stipulation on the plat that those lots have to go together. Um, regional planning approved it and Sugar Creek Township, uh, Sugar Creek Township approved it. So, um, I have no issue with the replat, um, especially now that Melissa has verification from Barry, so.
Okay, thank you.
So who's gonna maintain this property over time?
Well, the, 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 the lot that's, the wedge-shaped lot, my niece is actually going to take that lot and build a house on it. She, she actually works for the building company. So she's gonna, she's gonna build a house on that. And then, and then the lot to the right of that, I don't know what the lot number is, because I don't have any, anything in front of me.
3E.
G.
3E?
Excuse me?
I think it's 3E.
Okay, that lot is being purchased by the person on lot 37, who we built a house for. So it's under contract that they're going to buy that lot and then they're going to maintain that lot.
Okay, so, um, was there anything that, that kind of led to this change from the original plan of putting a house there that?
Well, you have, you're, you're six, yeah, you're 60 feet above the street. So it's, if you've been up in Highview Terrace, you see how, how that, that slope is. I mean, this whole development's been this way. On one side you got the creek, the slopes down to the creek. On the other side you got the hillside. So, you know, what we did on the lot 37 is we put a switched-back driveway. And that, and that driveway goes up like 24 feet from the curb to the top of the driveway. This lot would probably be 30 feet from the street up to where you get to it. So it's, it's almost, it's almost an unbuildable lot. I mean, you could build on it, but it'd be very, very expensive to build on it. Initially, my son came in, um, and was going to do something on a lot, and then we kind of switched gears. And then the people that were building the house were said they would buy a lot, so they said, fine, that, that's probably a better fit. Because you build a house there, that's fine, but you may never be able to sell it down the road, so. And she's gonna, she's going to, uh, she wants to put wildflowers up through, on that whole hillside. Is what she told us she needed to do, so I'm sure they'll, uh, dress it up pretty nice.
Good, good.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions on council?
Uh, this is just kind of clerical, but, um, one, I assume there's no great issues with these lots being merged together. And then, two, uh, it looks like the City of Belbrook and Sugar Creek Township line goes through, is it lot 1D and lot 4C?
It's 4G and 4F, I believe. So our lots are, um, let's see, we have 1F and 3E are located in the City of Belbrook. So that's the smaller lots. So 1F is a smaller lot that's, um, located at what, at what would be at the end of the parcel cul-de-sac. And then the larger lot, and then the lots behind it, those are the lots that are in Sugar Creek Township that would be annexed and that are currently what are considered landlocked. And then those would be combined with the other parcels to clean up that whole whole area there.
So my question, though, the section of land that's labeled lot 4C, is that going to remain Sugar Creek Township? I'm on page 33 of the pa- of tonight's packet.
I see 4G, but I don't see 4C.
4C is behind, um, 1D, it looks like.
Yeah.
Jessica, on Terrace Creek. Right before that stub, I think that that's what TJ's talking about.
Correct. Is that going to remain Sugar Creek Township?
Oh, um, yeah, I would assume that, that will, but I am not 100%.
Okay.
I'm not 100% on that. So that, that would probably be part of the talk, so. Um, I'm, I'm not, back when Kara brought this up originally, I can't remember if she talked about that parcel as well. Um, so it's possible that that could go too, but I'm not, I'm not 100% certain.
We, we don't
can bring up.
We don't have any control over that lot.
Okay.
So that lot's owned by the owner of that house that owns that lot.
Okay.
So Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the resolution says, uh, includes us making decisions on lots that are not in the city.
Well, you're not necessarily making decisions on lots that aren't in the city. So you, you are approving the replat, and by approving the replat, you are in effect, you are in effect allowing it to go further. But, um, you're really only approving the two lots that are in the city. That's only the thing, that's the only authority really Belbrook has at the moment.
Right, so I think we should strike all the other stuff and only, uh, approve what we have authority to approve, right? Or am I missing something?
Um, correct.
Well, but if the replat as a whole is going back to the county and the township and the county, uh, Green County Regional Planning have all approved the replat. I mean, we're all, we're all approving our own sections of the replat as a whole, though.
Yeah, so I guess if you're, if we're saying we're all in agreeance with how it stands, I don't see a problem with that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, um, can you guys hear me? This is John Brimble.
Yes.
Hope we can hear you, John. Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I worked with, uh, Peggy Middleton over at Tax Maps and, and regional planning. And this is how they instructed, uh, us to prepare this replat. And, uh, we, you know, we, we worked with them to prepare, prepare the replat this way. Um, so, I mean, that, that's kind of the why it's the way it is. And this was their, um, direction that they gave us. So I just wanted to share that, you know, that, that's why it's the way it is with the, with the lot, the partial, you know, the lot in Belbrook and the lot behind it in Sugar Creek Township. So that's how we dealt with this situation.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Any other questions of council? Senior Nick, we have a motion regarding resolution 2020 dash Y.
I'll make a motion to have it approved, Mayor.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Dr. Van Valtheisen to
A motion was made by Dr. Van Beldheisen to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Dash-Y, a resolution approving the replat of lots One E, Three D, Four B, and unplotted lands into lots One F, Four D, Four E, Four F, and Four G of Highview Terrace subdivision Sections One and Two. This was seconded by Mr. Hope. Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes. This time, I'd like to thank Rick and John and Jessica for being here this evening to help present it and walk through these questions. It was very beneficial.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your input.
Thanks.
This time, we'll move on. Pardon me? This time, we'll move on to City Manager Report.
Okay, so, we are going to have an old business item that's coming, that's included in my report. So, Kelsey Hurlbert, Executive Director of the Family Resource Center, is gonna be joining us shortly. Uh, we will also have a new business item that's gonna go over personal policy manual updates. So, in terms of my updates, I've got some, some crosswalks downtown that we're looking at. So, in preparing for the Twenty-Twenty-One budget, we're trying to look at some capital projects and kind of looking at the comprehensive plan and figuring out what we can identify as projects in the comprehensive plan to fold into the budget. And one of that is crosswalks. And Ryan Paisley, Service Director, and I have been working on that, and it's been very interesting. I don't know if council might realize this, but on Franklin Street, we have four, no, not just Franklin Street. Franklin Street in Maine, the main crossroads of downtown, we have four crosswalks, the entire community. Four. It's wild. So, we are identifying additional crosswalks. We have none on Main Street, which to me is really surprising. So, we're identifying some crosswalks to be able to install some facilities, which would include some sidewalk continuation, some ramps, some curbing, some things like that. Because like up on, I believe it's Ridgeway, we have a sidewalk that just kind of dumps off into grass, and then there's a gap in between the streets. So, we want to try to fix some of those things. So, just keep an eye out for that during our capital improvement discussions with our budget. We're making crosswalks a priority for the next couple of years and identifying some much-needed places where we can install those, which is pretty exciting. Electric vehicle charging grant update. So, this discussion was had at the last council meeting, and the application is complete and was being submitted today. So, I want to thank Jessica for her work on that project, and as well as Ryan Paisley, Service Director. They both did a great job in identifying the library in the city building and trying to figure out how to make that possible to hopefully get electric vehicle charging stations installed. So, the full application for Green County, there were five, five locations, which are included in the grant, and two of them were ours. So, that's pretty good. So, keeping our fingers crossed, those awards should be announced. I believe it's January of this coming year. So, we will stay updated on that, and I will keep you all updated on that. So, Coronavirus Relief Funds, so House Bill Six-Forteen is making its way through. I believe it's awaiting Dewine's signature if it hasn't already happened. So, that House Bill is accomplishing two different things. One of them is affording a third round of funding to local governments. And I'm not a hundred percent sure on what our exact allocation is gonna be, but I have every reason to believe, from what I've seen and read, that it's gonna be pretty significant. We've already received a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, I will keep you all updated, because that money will come from federal level, down to the state level, down to county level, and then back to us. So, we're hopeful that in the next week or two, we will know exactly what that is, and I will keep you all updated. The second thing that House Bill Six-Forteen did, in addition to allocating a third round of funding, is it did change the timeline for encumbering the funds from October fifteenth to November twentieth, which is great, because we are gonna get another round of funding in the next week or two, and in order to spend that by October fifteenth would pretty much be impossible. So, that extension is much needed, and we're very thankful for that. So, we continue to try to figure out how to best utilize that money, and they keep changing the guidance. They just released a new guidance document from the state level on the twenty-first of September. So, it keeps changing. So, you know, we're spending little bits of money as we can for things that we know are guaranteed, applicable to the guidance that's come out. But, like I said, it keeps changing. So, before we exhaust all of the funding, we want to make sure that what we allocate the rest of the money to is gonna be, we're gonna have the ability to do. One of the other things that was mentioned in terms of an idea of what to do with some of that money was a Wi-Fi hotspot. And I can't remember what conversation this came up in, but it was asked of me, and maybe it wasn't even in a city council meeting. But I know that a couple of other communities are installing Wi-Fi hotspots for community use. And so, I looked into that possibility. And to turn our city administration building into a Wi-Fi hotspot that would have a range of a city block was only gonna cost us, I think it was, it was either thirteen or sixteen hundred dollars. But one way or another, it was less than two thousand dollars to turn our city building into a Wi-Fi public hotspot, which is pretty awesome. So, I went ahead and I authorized that to happen. That work will be done on October fifth. And the best part about that is it's not gonna make our monthly ongoing costs go up. So, that's pretty great. So, we just have to pay for the initial infrastructure, which, like I said, less than two thousand dollars. And anybody that would be in need of utilizing public internet that might not have access would be able to come to the city building and do that. So, the second part of that is I want to try to look for ways to put some seating outside of the city building, so that if people do want to come and do homework, students want to come and do homework, or if citizens want to come and use the public Wi-Fi for their own reasons, I want to try to figure out how we might be able to get some seating so that people are able to be able to utilize that in a comfortable spot at the city building. So, all of that is gonna be using Coronavirus Relief Funds, which is pretty awesome. We are also looking at trying to make that capability happen at the library also, but that's a little trickier, because they, it's a city-owned building, but their IT is not through the city. So, that's something that we're trying to collaborate on. So, I will keep everybody posted on that.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Just a quick question for you on that, please. I like the idea of public Wi-Fi, but I'm assuming when you talk about like our tech advisors, that everything is filtered or protected, the same protections going into the internal city stuff will be applied to that?
Yes, so we have made great strides with our security and making sure that things are isolated. So, that would be a network that would be completely independent of any of our city servers and infrastructure and things like that. So, it will absolutely be secure. Um, we just got back our annual lead and copper testing for our water. And each year, we sample twenty homes. And so, our service department has a list of homes, and that's a volunteer basis where we drop off the test kits. We give them the instructions. They, they collect water samples, they give them back to us, and we send them off for testing. So, there are stipulations in terms of the age of the homes, things like that, because the lead that we're testing for is not within our infrastructure, but it's within the home's infrastructure, which is why we test some of the older homes, because they are more susceptible to having lead inside of their infrastructure and their internal plumbing. So, we got our test results back, and what we did was we introduced phosphates into our water back in twenty seventeen. And some of you might have remembered that. And the lead levels within that interior plumbing of the homes that we have tested have consistently went down since we added those phosphates. And what the phosphates do is it's a microscopic coating that is, that ends up being applied to the internal plumbing of the homes in which the water is passing through. So, those homes that we have tested, the lead levels have consistently went down since the addition of the phosphates, which is great. But it is worth noting that the lead levels that we have always picked up have always been very trace amounts. So, nothing that would be concerning or over any sort of EPA threshold. So, that's all very good. So, some of the things that we've been doing to try to help reduce any levels of lead, even though they were only trace amounts to begin with, have worked in the past couple of years. So, if anybody has any specific questions on that, Ryan is your guy. Uh, he gave me a crash course in phosphates and lead and copper testing, and hopefully I conveyed that well today. But if you have any specific questions on that, Ryan can definitely help you to understand some of those things. Um, North Bellevue, construction is finally in full swing, which is great. And the footers have been poured, and the concrete arch is really the big piece of this infrastructure that's gonna be put in, and it is set to be delivered on October second. So, that will be this coming Friday. So, it's gonna come in in a number of different sections. They're gonna have some large trucks that are coming in and doing that. So, I know that we're all really excited to see that setting of that concrete arch happen. So, that's gonna happen on October second. So, we will see quite a bit of progress on that project at the completion of this week. And I also have the Fire Chief Search and Hiring Timeline, which is included in my update print version. So, with the impending retirement of Chief Niedhard, December thirty-first, I have a timeline that's been laid out. So, I worked through this with him. And what we did was we took his retirement date, and we kind of worked backwards to try to figure out all of the steps that we would need to go through, so that we would know what the appropriate timeline would be to post the position, receive applications, have interviews, and make sure that everything would be done within a good timeframe before he retires. So, we plan to post that position on October the twelfth. So, that will be on the city's website, and we will post that to a number of different professional organization websites externally as well. So, we have that, and I think that that is it in terms of my City Manager Update.
Thank you, Melissa. Does anyone have questions to the City Manager?
None for me.
See, none. Thanks, Melissa. Let's move on to old business, the Family Resource Center update. And I see Kelsey's in the audience.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Thank you very much for having me back. Um, I just wanted to give you an update on the dispersal of the COVID relief funds. The families who received the financial support from the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund were selected through a survey that I discussed last time I was here, that we created and distributed to all of our clients. The survey asked each client if they were negatively financially impacted due to COVID nineteen, if they were struggling to pay their bills, and if they were facing eviction or utility disconnections. The survey is still being distributed weekly with our Food Pantry email sign-up to all of our clients. So, all new clients also have the opportunity to fill out the form, and people who have filled it out before have the opportunity to update their response if their financial situation has changed. The Family Resource Center Board Chair, Nancy Pestian, and I formulated a plan to distribute the funds using a phased approach based on need as determined by the survey. In Phase One, I analyzed the data to identify clients who were eminently at risk of being evicted or having their utilities disconnected. I contacted each client over the phone and asked them to provide a documentation that could demonstrate this need and show that it was due to a negative financial impact from COVID nineteen, such as a furlough, business closure, loss of child support, payment, et cetera. I asked them to provide as much documentation as they possibly could, plus a personalized letter that explained their story and how COVID nineteen and the shutdown had a negative financial impact on their family. Once I had these materials together, Nancy and I sat down to determine who would receive what amount based on their need, while considering the amount of funding we had available to us. The majority of families, which was six, received a thousand dollars. Three families received fifteen hundred dollars based on extenuating circumstances that led us to understand that their situation was more dire. And one family received three hundred, because that was the amount they needed to prevent eviction, and they already had a plan for being caught up by the next month. So, in total, we have distributed funds to ten families and distributed a total of ten thousand eight hundred of the twenty thousand dollars we received. As each client received their funds, I sat down with them, and we discussed the limitations of use. And each client signed a statement of understanding or contract where they agreed that they would only utilize the funds for necessary bills and would provide us with documentation of how the money was spent if requested. Most of the clients followed up with me very quickly to provide this documentation unprompted. We were able to meet the immediate need of those who were facing eviction and utilities being shut off at that point. But as part of our plan, we have kept some of the money available, because as time goes on, we have additional families who are saying that they are now in more dire financial straits due to being unable to catch up on bills from the negative financial impact of COVID nineteen shutdowns. We have about eight families in this situation currently, where they have indicated to us that things have gotten worse since the survey was first issued. We are now working with them to gather this documentation so that we can disperse money to them as well. We have eighteen other families who have had a negative financial impact due to COVID nineteen and are struggling to pay their bills. But when they filed out the survey, they were not at risk of eviction or disconnection. Ideally, we would like to be able to provide financial assistance to them as well, to help ease the stress of the difficulties the pandemic has caused financially. The feedback I have received from the clients we have been able to assist, been able to assist, has been overwhelming and wonderful. To hear that we have had a small hand in alleviating some of their stress has been amazing, and we are so grateful to you for allowing us to allocate these funds to Belbrook community members. You have truly made a difference in their lives. Your funds helped a single mom of four currently fighting cancer, a single grandmother raising her granddaughter, who has not received child support in months due to her daughter being furloughed, a single mother of two, who was a home health aide, but none of her clients wanted her in their house in the midst of the pandemic, and a teacher who was working two jobs to make ends meet but was furloughed from her second job for months, to name just a few of them. And I also wanted to give you a small update on things at the Family Resource Center, but I would love to hear if anybody has any questions or comments before I move into that part.
Kelsey, first off, thanks so much for what you do, and thanks for being such a good steward of the money. I think it's what you presented is an excellent use of the money. I'm glad we're able to help the Resource Center and help the individual families out as well.
Thank you.
Does anyone on council have any questions for Kelsey at this point? I can see them all, Kelsey. They're shaking their heads no, so go ahead and continue.
Thank you. We have been extremely busy at the Family Resource Center over the past few months. In the next few weeks, we will actually be changing our name to the Belbrook Sugar Creek Community Support Center and rebranding everything that we do as a part of that. This name change comes with a variety of program additions, such as nutrition classes that will begin the week of October twelfth, and support group offerings that we are currently getting organized. We just had a social work intern join our team for the year, who will be helping us get those off the ground. We also have a new volunteer coordinator, who will be helping us manage the generous and dedicated volunteers who help us and will help us recruit others as needed. We've also been changing the physical space of the center as well. So, we were there probably a total of eighteen hours over the weekend, working on setting up a classroom. And as part of this, we reduced the size of the clothing closet that we've had to offer only new children's shoes, new socks and underwear of all sizes, winter outerwear, and emergency clothing to help people in cases of leaving an abusive home, gaining custody of a new child, a fire, et cetera. We found that having a large clothing closet was not a great use of space, based on the number of people who utilized it. So, we are very happy to be transitioning the space into a classroom. We will still be providing Thanksgiving and Christmas assistance, and we will be setting out warm outerwear for our clients to take as needed on Wednesday, October seventh. We are serving approximately thirty families per week through our food pantry, and we will continue to operate our food pantry program as it has been. And if you have any questions, or if anybody would like to talk more about what we're doing, I'm often at the Family Resource Center, or I can be reached over email. So, thank you again for entrusting me to allocate these funds on behalf of the city. And it's, you have no idea what a pleasure it's been to be able to tell people that the city has, is able to financially support them. It's been wonderful. So, thank you very much. Uh, is able to financially support them, it's been wonderful, so thank you very much.
You're wel- you're welcome, Kelsey, and thank you very much for what you do. It sounds like you've been extremely busy.
We have been.
Any questions of council?
No, I just wanted to uh second the mayor's comments. Thank you very much, Kelsey, for all that you do.
Awesome work, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Thank you, I'm very happy to be here.
We have more money coming, so we'll see what's what we can do with it and how we divvy it up. There is some confusion as to how much it'll be, but we'll look and see and find out what the rules are and. Take it from there, but thanks again for what you do for us and again, you've been a great steward of the money and I. Appreciate how you put it to good use, thanks so much.
Well, that's wonderful, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thanks. Next up on the agenda, new business is updates to the Personnel Policy Manual. This goes back to our city manager.
Okay, so this is the balance of the hundred and five page packet that was uh in everybody's inbox, so um. I just wanted to go over a couple of things. I wanted council to have the opportunity to be able to see this and offer feedback before it comes uh by way of ordinance, which hopefully can happen at the next meeting. And um. There are, it looks like a lot of changes, but it's not really a lot of change, so the way that this was structured in the past was. There was our personnel manual and then outside of that, there were administrative policies, so. A lot of the red that you see throughout the manual. Is basically the incorporation of the administrative policies, so. I had folded those in because I didn't really understand why they were disconnected and. Most of the administrative policies that we had um were part of other cities' formal personnel policy manuals and I just thought that it made sense to have it all in one document. Very above board um so that council is able to see all of it and prove and approve all of it as one document, so. The bulk of the changes are the folding in of the administrative policies that have always existed, so I kind of. Abbreviated some of them because some of them were very lengthy and. Overlapped with a lot of other things that were in our personnel policy manual, so I I folded those in and then. The main changes that were made were. I incorporated parental leave, which was part of the uh fire or not the fire, the police sergeant and officers contracts. And something that I wanted to be able to offer citywide, so um. I did include that in the general personnel policy manual, so just to refresh everybody. That is two weeks for a male or female employee. That can be used in addition to sick leave and in uh conjunction with F M L A. For the birth or adoption of a child, so they can use that for um appointments that surround the birth or adoption or uh to take time off. In order to be able to bond with the child, so. That's um, that's a policy that again was folded into the uh police officer and police sergeant contracts. And I want to be able to offer that citywide, so that was included. And the other major change um is again another item that was folded into the uh. The F O P contracts, which is the striking of the. Award of personal days or not utilizing sick leave and instead just offering those as personal days to the employees without. The exchange of it being an award for no sick leave, so I think that that's important, especially given the uh current. Um, environment that we're in with the pandemic. It was a deterrent to to utilize sick leave, knowing that you would be able to uh have personal days if you didn't call off, so. I just think that that was just a bad practice and uh so again, that's just bringing uh. Bringing the personnel policy manual in line with uh the police contracts, uh so. Those are the changes that I made. There were a few language tweaks that were made, one that I feel is. Is pretty notable and important. And uh there are different policies in the section uh number six, which is employee conduct. There, we had a zero tolerance clause for workplace violence. And I duplicated that zero tolerance clause and uh incorporated that into section six point two. Which is discrimination and sexual harassment. I uh, I felt that it was very important uh to include a zero tolerance policy for discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. And uh extend that beyond uh workplace violence, because I feel like that's a very important. Position for the city to take and um message for our employees to understand that that's not something that we're going to tolerate. So that was uh one of the language changes that I felt was pretty important to fold into our policies, so. Other than that, it's really just the merging of the administrative policies. And uh then the change to the uh. Sick leave award or the personnel time. Personal time award for no use of sick leave and in exchange uh offering personal days and then the parental leave, so. That is what is before you in this very large document and if uh council has any. Comments, suggestions, feedback um on any of this. Prior to it coming back in ordinance format, then I am absolutely. Willing to entertain and incorporate any of that uh that you might have, so that's it for me.
Does anyone have any questions as a city manager?
I read all the red.
There was a lot of reading.
It was a lot.
Melissa, why don't you go ahead and prepare it then for ordinance and uh maybe highlight the the three or four changes you mentioned as far as the section we can focus on, so we don't have to. Necessarily read the entire hundred and five pages, although I'm sure we all anxiously look forward to doing that, but uh we may not want to do it as much. Any other comments?
Uh, those personnel manuals are tough, so thanks for taking the time, Melissa. I'm gonna make it right.
Yeah, they are, they are. Okay, thanks, Melissa. Committee reports. Service.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of things. Uh, next week. The service department will start flushing hydrants. Be all five days next week, eight thirty to three thirty. Uh, suggested not to wash any. White linens or clothes. Uh, could be a possible rust and debris. It's also suggested if you have a water softener. Replace it in bypass to keep sediments and uh. Possibly rust and stuff getting into your media, which can damage your water softener. And uh. The only other thing was the uh PFAS test came back. For our water and it was, they found a trace amount, which. Basically nothing, but since they did find a trace amount. We'll have uh every quarter, if the water will be tested. At least four more times, um. I'm just tickled to death that we're doing all this testing. You know where you stand. We're good so far. And um. As I mentioned a few months ago. With the technology that we have and the ability to pick up parts per trillion. These types of tests will probably be on the increase. And it just uh. Allows you to know if you got good water or if you do find something. You can find out where the contaminant came from. And then take ways or remediate it. Make sure our water flies, water supply is safe. Belbrook has always been very good at uh. Go on on the offensive and keep it good pure water. And I thank Ryan and his crews for uh. Uh, supporting that. That's all I have, thanks.
Thanks, good update, thank you, appreciate it. Safety.
No uh updates for this meeting, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, TJ. Finance and audit, Nick is not here, does anyone else want to speak?
I lucked to neck to keep teaching me about city finances, Mayor.
Thank you. Community affairs.
Uh, I don't have anything other than I think, isn't there a police. Uh, recognition on the second or to put blue, blue lights out? Does anybody know about that?
I think that that was kind of a grassroots community effort, nobody has um. Notified the city of anything formally for us to be able to communicate, at least from my end, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I, I just heard about it somewhere and I I didn't know if anybody knew about it, but I think it's a pretty cool idea, I just don't know when it is. But other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thanks, Lane. Now we have the clerks update. Pam, go ahead and tell us what lies ahead.
Okay, so um, we had the work session tonight on C I C's, the next meeting, which will be Monday, October twelfth. Will begin at six thirty with a work session discussing the fire station consolidation results. And then um, there will be uh. The next two meetings, October twenty sixth and November ninth, will have work sessions. For the budget discussions, uh preparing next year's budget. And then on the twenty third of November will be a work session. Uh, that will combine the discussions coming out of the C I C work session today and the firehouse consolidation, which is next time. So lots of work sessions for everyone coming up in the future. Um, the legislative items coming up, we have uh several ordinances you're going to be seeing soon. One is uh update in the guidelines for members of boards, commissions and committees. And uh, there's going to be um an ordinance amending so, a part of section eighteen point two. Uh, having to do with permitted signs and uh. Time restrictions there. Um, several of these things are with the municipal attorney and once they get through that point, they'll be coming to you all. Um, and then we will have the ordinance uh. To approve the updated personnel manual. So uh, there's several things that are going to be coming forward from the planning board in the near future, one is updates to article fourteen. Uh, updates to um eighteen twenty B, which is the sign code for the village district. And the vacancy registration requirements, so planning board's busy, so that'll all be heading your way. And I think that's everything I can think of, um. Did I miss anything, Melissa, that you can think of? There's probably other things, we'll let you know.
That's enough business for the next couple of months for us. Thank you very much, Pam. This time open discussion. We'll go alphabetically, uh, Mr. Greenwood.
Nothing nightmare.
Thank you. Councilman Havens.
Thank you, Mayor, um, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Oak.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Milstetter.
I don't have anything either.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Vanville Heisen.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Only comment I have, I just think it's been a nice uh range with the Family Resource Center and I appreciate uh. Kelsey coming to give us an update. It sounds like we've really spent money in the right direction and for the right causes and I. Appreciate her taking over the administrative task of how to allocate those funds and. What's the best way to do and I think we've got great results so far. That being the case, do we have any comments from the public?
Uh, yes, we did, we have one person who wanted to speak, so I'm uh introducing Cory Collins, so. You should be.
Cory, please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Cory Collins, uh, can I get a mic check?
That's not good to hear you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, Cory Collins, nineteen eighty one Cabernet Way, I'm in the Vineyards. And for a couple of years now, we have been trying to connect to downtown. Uh, our, our common area does touch seven twenty five and we had previously discussed with Mr. Mark, I can't pronounce his last name, Schleck Heck. Uh, the previous uh, uh, previous, uh, previous city manager, we had a meeting with him about. Uh, going downtown and how we could connect up there and we asked uh for a crosswalk. Uh, just the striping and the signage to be put in and we were denied then because he said it was a safety issue. Uh, due to the speed uh going down seven twenty five right there where it's thirty five. Uh, also, there was a discussion about. Putting in a sidewalk that would connect up there to the land. Um, that would then go up to the light next to the church and they said that was a cost issue, I think it was. I think it was at the time as quoted at like ninety thousand. Um, so what we just asked just for signage and and stripes to be put along the road right there to cross over because our community, you know, wants to go downtown, we want to visit Macintosh, we want to. Be able to go to the Sugar Maple Parade. Uh, our kids to get safely out of the neighborhood because currently we're, we're stuck in our neighborhood and have no ability to get safely out of it by foot. Um, and we all know Little Sugar Creek is is a death trap, so. Uh, w- we want to be able to, you know, get safely to downtown to visit um, you know, all the stores down there to, you know, everybody wants to go to the Dairy Shed during the summer. We want to get the kids down there, there's all kinds of things going on. Uh, so we just want more opportunity to to visit the town and, you know, the walkability factor, when you have. You know, the three most affluent neighborhoods in the area that have no access to downtown, it kind of hurts that walkability. Uh, or a- any type of investment in the downtown area. Um, so that, that was my two cents, um, so I just, I just welcomed the, the discussion earlier uh about the walkability of downtown, I hope that discussion continues. Um, so that maybe we can connect up.
Thank you, Cory. And possibly Melissa, is there something we can revisit to see if it makes sense to put some striping, at least crosswalks down there, it sounds like that's the low cost option. The sidewalk could be something probably a little bit more expensive, we wouldn't be able to enter into right now, but. Possibly since we've only got four crosswalks, maybe think about adding a fifth.
Yeah, we, we actually had a conversation about um, and I always get it confused whether it's the Vineyards or Sable Ridge is first and I think it's Sable Ridge is the second one, but. At least getting a connection that gets over to um. Closer to Highview Terrace to get up that way with the, they are going to have that connection at some point, so. We have, we have been thinking about those neighborhoods and what the best way to kind of deal with that is, so it's definitely on our radar, just, you know. What the, what the actual. Solution is going to be is kind of up in the air, but it's not something that is lost on us.
Okay, thanks, thanks so much. And Cory, thanks so much for your comments. Anyone else tonight, Pam? Okay. Does any member of council have any more matters or any more business to bring before us this evening?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.